Alderman Rivera. Nope, Alderman Turner is first. Is Alderman Turner in the house?
He's not there.
Let's go, Alderman Turner. Alderman Turner? Alderman Rivera. Alderman Rivera. Alderman Turner? Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian. Present. Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Mayor.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
We're only looking for Rivera, right?
Yeah, he's coming.
Alderman Rivera, there you are. Okay.
Okay. Mark him as present.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Seven fifteen, go right, you got the call, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is the invocation that will be given by Pastor Derek Caples. And he is from the Jesus Name Apostolic Church.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members. Let us go before the Lord in prayer. Father, we bless your name tonight, oh God. We give you all praise, honor, and glory, oh God. Father, first, we pray for this city of Waukegan, oh God. For those that, Lord God, are dealing with any type of violence, oh God, any despair, oh God, any issues, oh God, we pray right now that your peace would be extended throughout this city, oh God. For those, Lord God, are in need, oh God, or have any lack, oh God, Father, we pray that your prosperity, oh God, would flow unto them, oh God. Father, I pray for this mayor and these council members, oh God, personally, oh God, that you would cause them to prosper and be in good health, oh God. Lord God, and as they come forth tonight to deal, oh God, with the business of this city, oh God, I pray that you give them clarity, that you give them unity, oh God, that you cause them to have resolution, oh God. Father, I pray for those that are even in the room tonight, oh God, that your blessing would be extended over them, oh God. We give you all honor and praise, oh God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. Again, this is our June 20th meeting, and I can't believe we're already on the first part of summer, but thank you for being here. I am going to be removing the mandate for masks in City Hall tomorrow, so for any of you that feel comfortable, you may remove them this evening. That's up to you. Okay, Mayor's comments. Juneteenth. I want to begin by wishing you all a joyous celebration of Juneteenth, which commemorates June 19th, 1865, the day the word of the Emancipation Proclamation reached Galveston, Texas, ending the scourge of slavery in this country. I hope all of you took some time to partake in Waukegan's Juneteenth festivals over the weekend. Organizers around the community made the weekend special with events such as guided tours of the historic African-American sites throughout the city and Lake County. And today, we actually had the prayer breakfast, which I was honored to give out some awards to some very worthy recipients, along with Congressman Schneider, Lauren Beth Gash, State Attorney Reinhardt, and myself. We gave those awards out. Juneteenth itself was yesterday, but today marks just the second time the holiday has been federally recognized. Unfortunately, due to budgetary constraints, we were not able to put it into this year's calendar, but it for sure will be there for next year. This was all part of our salary ordinance that went through a few weeks ago, but like I said, it is already budgeted for next year. Juneteenth is a central day in our nation's history and a fundamental way to understand our past and present. In the 157 years since that day, we have made great strides towards equality. While we still have a long way to go to achieve a truly perfect union for all Americans, today we can recognize the progress we've made and look forward to a more equitable future. Farmer's Market. As many of you are likely aware, we are unfortunately not going to have a farmer's market this year. We are in the process of working on it for next year. We are very disappointed. There's been a lot of discussion about the farmer's market recently. I do not wish to rehash what has already been said. For those of you who are disappointed, keep in mind that for a variety of factors, some of which have been publicized, and many others that have not, has led us to the disappointing spot we have today. Losing out on this opportunity is never the outcome we wanted, but we will move forward. We will work together on it for next year. And like I said, we can only keep going forward, we can't look back. I want to make sure that everyone in attendance tonight knows that the city staff and leaders in this city remain committed to making this happen in the future. Some other announcements. The city of Waukegan sends our condolences to the family and friends of Norman Fornano, who passed away on June 10th. He graduated from Waukegan High School in 1964, was a veteran of the U.S. Army. He was active in the City Club of Waukegan, enjoyed golfing as a member of the Glen Flora Country Club. Waukegan Scoop is back, folks, July 8th and July 9th. As we know, this is always a fun event. More details will be posted on social media, but in the meantime, you can find out more about scoopwaukegan.com. Tomorrow is the first Waukegan band concert of the season. It starts at 7:30. These are every Tuesday evening from now until August 9th at Steiner Pavilion at Waukegan Beach. I would suggest tomorrow you come early, we are expecting the beach to be crowded, so come and get your seats. Tomorrow will also be the second workshop in the Stopping the School-to-Prison Pipeline hosted by the Ant Mount Foundation. The event will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and in-person seating is limited, but will be livestreamed. Contact the Ant Mount Foundation for additional information. Their website is antmountfoundation.org. American Place Casino is hosting two hiring events this week on Wednesday and Thursday at 1545 South Waukegan Road. Applications are also being accepted online at americanplace.com. Saturday, June 25th, the city is hosting a paper shredding, electronic waste, and medication collection event from 8:30 until 11:30 at the Lake County Sheriff's Parking Lot at 25 South Martin Luther King. A list of accepted electronics is available on the city's website. Finally, celebrate our American independence with the Waukegan Park District's parade on Sunday, July 3rd at 1:00 p.m., traveling north on Sheridan Road from Franklin Street to Bowen Park. Then on Monday, come out for fireworks at the harbor at 9:30 p.m. I'd like to remind everyone that the Waukegan Park District, Roberti House, Beacon Place, and the Waukegan Library all have a lot of programming this summer. Many of these programs are free and have scholarships available if you need financial assistance. Let's work together to keep our community safe by ensuring that our kids are busy this summer, they have some fun things to do. They need that socialization after the coronavirus. Lastly, I'd like to remind residents that we are looking for volunteers for the Planning and Zoning Board, the Port Authority, Waukegan Housing, Waukegan Public Library, and the Historic Preservation Committee, to name a few. Please submit your resumes in person downstairs at the front desk, or email me at mayor.taylor@waukeganil.gov. That concludes the announcements, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We have next a proclamation, and a proclamation honoring Bishop John Caples Jr. Whereas Bishop and Pastor John I. Caples Jr. is a dynamic leader and spiritual advisor to many in Waukegan, the surrounding community, and the nation, and whereas Bishop Caples has dedicated his life to ministering the gospel to souls in need of restoration. And whereas, from his early beginnings, Bishop Caples has had a heart to help people who have been hurt, abused, and neglected. And whereas, for the past 30-plus years, Bishop Caples, along with his wife Celeste, devoted their lives to the ministry through evangelizing throughout the nation and their home church, Jesus Name Apostolic. And whereas Bishop Caples has followed Luke 4:18 in spreading the word of God, therefore reaching the lost, and has brought healing and restoration to families and hurting individuals. And whereas Bishop Caples was instrumental in establishing Family First Center, founded in response to repeated acts of violence and unrest, and set up as a needed outreach to carry the vision outside the four walls of the church and beyond the scope of traditional ministry, leading Family First Center to be the forerunner in efforts to stem violence and change lives in Lake County. And whereas, at the Torchbearers Legacy Luncheon, Bishop Caples was honored with the LMA Davis Award for Pastoral Care, highlighting his lifelong work. And whereas Jesus Name Apostolic Church hosts Kids' Summer Camp, Weapons of Our Warfare, and Back-to-School Block Parties under the direction of Bishop Caples, to further support both the secular and faith communities in bridge understanding between disparate groups. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Anbi Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby recognize and honor Bishop John Caples Jr. for his dedication to Waukegan and the surrounding community, his contributions to strengthen our community, and his actions to broker peace and goodwill, so all Waukegan's residents can thrive and reach their full potential. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this proclamation, signed by the mayor and city clerk, was presented to Bishop Caples on Sunday, the 19th of June 2022, adopted this 20th of June 2022. Thank you. The next one we have is a resolution. Resolution 22-R-98 honoring the life of Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. Whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. was born on August 4th, 1941, in the city of Newport, Arkansas. And whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. attended North Chicago Community High School. And whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. married the love of his life, Mildred Jean Crump, in 1960, and together they had five children and adopted seven more. Whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. began a life of service to God at the age of 19. And whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. founded All Nations Church of God Holiness in Christ in Waukegan in 1964. And whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. also founded All Nations Enterprises in Waukegan, which serviced Lake County for over 50 years. And whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. provided the invocation at Waukegan City Council meetings, along with spiritual guidance, for many years. And whereas Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. left this world on June 7th, 2022, surrounded by his lovely wife of over 60 years and his children. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby honor the life and legacy of Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. for his dedication and service to Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the family of Bishop Joseph Coburn Sr. on the 17th day of June 2022, and then read into the public record of the Waukegan City Council meeting on June 20th, 2022, dated this 20th day of June 2022. Those are the two, ma'am. And now you have a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we're going to have a presentation by Robinson Engineering related to the citywide lead services. You've all heard me talk up here about how we're going to be replacing lead pipes over the next several, several years. So we're going to talk a little bit about that today, and as we go through this process, you will learn that you will all be contacted by cards and all of that, they'll go through all of this, but I want you to know that, hey, this is really going on, so that when you get these cards, you just don't throw them away and think that, oh, I don't know who this is. We're presenting this tonight so that you'll get all the information you need, as much as we can give you in 20 minutes, but thank you for being here, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, staff, and audience at large. The mayor has done a fine job of introducing this important multi-year program that the city will be undertaking with respect to an important public health issue, which is lead in water. That was originally an issue with Flint, Michigan, back around seven years ago, and is now state law in Illinois for municipalities to remediate lead service lines throughout their communities. I am here to introduce our project team. My name is Aaron Fundich with Robinson Engineering. I've got Jonathan Flowers and Diane Moller, our very own Waukegan resident, Diane Moller, with us this evening to present the bulk of the presentation. And we'll be available certainly for questions at the close of the presentation in an effort to respect all of your timelines this evening. We think that'll be the most efficient way to hold questions till the end. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan, who's going to share a little bit of our experience with lead service line replacements here in Illinois.
Thanks, Aaron. So we're pretty proud of what we've done here at Robinson. We work for over 24 municipalities doing lead service line replacement work. We've secured in excess of $28 million. At the end of the summer, we'll have five communities that will have completely replaced all their lead service lines, and soon, we hope, to name Waukegan as one of those communities as well. It might take many years, but it's a long road, and it's worth traveling. So I'm going to turn it over to Diane now. She's the lead engineer on this project, and as Aaron said, a resident of Waukegan.
Thanks, Jonathan. Like you said, I am Diane Moller. I'm a project engineer at Robinson Engineering. I have a 20-minute presentation on the lead service line replacement for you this evening. Before I get started, I wanted to thank the Waukegan City staff for their help in putting this together, specifically Chris Garland, the Public Works Director, he's here tonight, and Antonio Dominguez, the Water Plant Superintendent, also Jesus Alguisira, the city engineer, but he is not here tonight. So getting started, the background, what is a water service line? A service line is the pipe that connects the water main to the water meter in your home. So there are kind of two parts of it, there's a public side and a private side. The public side of the water service is within the right-of-way, and the private side starts from the boundary of the right-of-way to the interior of your home. So historically, some services that were led were partially replaced, either on the public or the private side. So the public side starts here, goes to the water main, or they were replaced on the private side, starting here to the meter. They are also the main culprit of lead service lines, or lead contamination in drinking water, sorry about that. All right. So why do we care about lead contamination of drinking water? We care because it affects cognitive development of children. So the two main demographics of concern are pregnant women and children ages zero to six years old. So Illinois recognizes that this is an issue, so they passed a law that went to effect this year, January 1st. It's called the Illinois Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act. The major takeaways is that municipalities are now mandated to replace all lead service lines within their community. They also need to develop an inventory of service line materials, and they also need to develop a replacement plan. So Waukegan has an estimated 8,000 lead service lines. According to this act, Waukegan must replace their service lines within 20 years. That corresponds to an annual rate of 5%. That is 400 services per year for 20 years, and that is an estimated cost of $4 million per year in 2022 dollars. So how did we determine that Waukegan has approximately 8,000 services? We did staff interviews, so we've got a picture of Chris and Jesus here. Antonio, unfortunately, or fortunately for him, does not have an online presence. So we had meetings with Public Works staff. We talked about historical projects and their information of the system, and we got information on where they've encountered lead in the community based on water main replacements and emergency repairs, things like that. So whenever they had eyes on a service, they were able to tell the material, and we got that information from them and put together a project area from that. We also have meter photos from a 2015 and 2016 meter replacement project. So on this slide, we've got pictures from when they were replaced in all of the homes in Waukegan. On the right-hand side, this service line is coming in from the basement floor. This is a lead service, and you can tell that it's lead because of the color, it's a dull gray color, and this white joint right here, this bulb joint, that is very typical of a lead service line. The service coming in on this picture on the left is a copper service, so we can determine that based on the color. It's hard to see in this presentation because the sun is behind me, but the rust right here is green, and that's typical of copper. So this gave us information on approximately 20% of the services in the residents in Waukegan. We also have experience from past lead service line replacement projects. So this is from the community in Lansing, Illinois. Each rectangle is a parcel, is an address, and the color of each rectangle represents the building age, and the letter L, the blue droplet, and the G represent the service line material. So we were able to do a statistical analysis of the correlation between material and building age. We found that homes in the 1940s and 1950s are more likely to have lead, it's about a 50% probability. Lead was being phased out around 1960, and it was banned for use in 1984. Before 1940, it's a little lower than 50% because residents had more time to replace their lead services. So based on that, we developed a project area, and within that area, we've assumed that 50% of the residences have a lead service.
Can I have you hold the mic up higher?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. So funding, how is this paid for? Year one is going to be paid for with the America Rescue Plan Act funds, or at least partial funding. That is the COVID relief funds. We also have the bipartisan infrastructure bill. This is the federal bill that was recently passed. It's going to be dispersed through the IEPA State Revolving Fund Program. $50 million of forgiveness will be available for the next five years, per year, for the next five years. The terms are announced annually in June. Currently, for this year, it's $4 million per community per year. And we are pursuing funding for the full cost of replacement for years two through six. So earlier I mentioned that we have to replace 400 services a year, and it's approximately $4 million. I have a cost estimate here that shows how that is figured. So we've got 400 services replaced here. We have some partial lead-water service replacements, that's in case the service looks like copper on the inside, but could actually be lead on the public side. So we would pothole, excavate, take a look at the service line, and determine whether it's lead or copper. And the inlet filters, the waste disposal, and the sanitary sewer service adjustment are also typical costs associated with these replacement projects. We also have a 10% contingency included with design and engineering, or design and construction engineering. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. All right, so the project area for year one corresponds to the road resurfacing program for the next two fiscal years. We do this because part of the replacement includes excavation in the road near the water main, so this has less disturbance for the road. We patch it, and then they come back and resurface it afterwards. So the next few slides just kind of give a closer view of some of these areas that are included in year one. And we'll have time for questions if people want to see this at the end. Now, the project area for years two through six, those were prioritized based on the IEPA criteria. So year two is shown on the southern part of Waukegan. Year three is here. Year four is right next to year two. Year five is here, near the downtown. And then this is the northern half here, so we've got another block of year two here. Year three includes a little portion of Grand Avenue and just north of it. Year four here is slightly north of downtown. Year six here is south of Bonnie Brook Golf Course. So we have this project area identified. We are going to check the assumption that we have 8,000 services by sending out this survey. So residents are going to get a survey mailer. This is going to have a QR code on it, and that QR code is going to take you to the website where you can download three photos of your service line and your address. So we are going to take that information, and we are going to identify the service line for the resident. They're not going to be responsible for identifying it themselves. This mailer will also have a phone number for someone in the engineering department in case the resident has questions on how to take the photos and how to use the survey. The survey will also be available online, and it's going to be in both English and Spanish. Yeah, so this QR code currently works, if anyone wants to check it out tonight.
Why don't we leave it up after the meeting, just leave it there for people to use?
Yeah, we can do that. All right. We're also going to sound out notifications after the survey. This is going to include a project description, and it's also going to include FAQs and contact information, both for Robinson Engineers and city staff. We're also going to have an open house once the contracts are awarded, and the open house is going to have the contractor attend, city staff, and Robinson staff. We'll all be available to explain the project and to answer any questions. We also encourage residents to sign these access agreements. These give the contractor permission to come into the house and verify the service line material, set up a time to do the replacement, and if the resident does not agree to have them enter the home, they have to sign a waiver that goes on file with the Illinois Department of Public Health. And they will also have to sign a residential disclosure. If they ever want to sell their home, they have to disclose the presence of lead to any sellers. So given that, and the fact that the service line replacement increases home values by $10,000, and this project is currently no cost to residents, we really try to encourage residents to sign this agreement. Okay? So we've got the schedule for year one. We're planning to send out the survey this week, give residents about three weeks to get it back to us. We're going to send out that informational notification package shortly after, advertise the project in mid-August, open bids in September, and then start construction this October. Construction will be complete in June of 2023. So the schedule for years two through six is a little different because this is the part of the project that has IEPA. So the schedule for years two through six is a little different because this is the part of the project that has IEPA funding. So we submitted the project plan, June, early June, so early, earlier this month. We're going to send out the survey to the rest of the project area in October just to give us time to process the surveys of the residents who live in the year one area. We're going to give residents about four weeks to return it. We're going to complete the design and submit the loan application in February. This gives us enough time to have project plan approval by March 2023. So the IEPA has a hard deadline of approval by March 31st. After March 31st, they use a scoring rubric to create an intended funding list. So they look at all of the communities that have project plan approval. And they rank them and use that prioritization to get funding. So that intended funding list, or IFL, comes out in June. Once we have that list and we're confirmed for funding, we go out to bid. That'll be July. The IEPA requires a six-week period between going out to bid and opening bids. So we would open bids in August and then construction starts in December. And the reason why there's a larger gap between opening bids and starting construction is because the IEPA has a period of time to review the big bid package and confirm the loan or confirm the funding. So construction starts in December and then construction for that year would be complete the following September. So that completes the presentation, so we have time for questions.
I have a question over here. Alderman Bolton.
Yes.
Yes, did I understand that the project will be starting in the first ward, Yeoman Street? Did I see that?
So for years, we can start. Sorry. The, the map with the IEPA funding has the wards on them. So year two would be, year two and year four would be in Ward One.
Yes, okay. And my second question, if a homeowner decides not to sign this disclosure, what are the consequences?
So we're talking about the access agreement or are you talking about the residential?
Whatever you were speaking in reference to.
Okay.
Clarify, thank you.
Yeah, so we've got the access agreement that gives them, gives them, gives the contractor permission to enter the home to do the replacement. If they don't sign it, then they don't get their service replaced at no cost to them. They, they have a waiver that goes into the Illinois Department of Public Health and that's for the benefit of the municipality to show that the municipality is making every effort to replace the service lines and meet the criteria of the act.
Thank you. Will this presentation be on the city's website?
We can put it on the website.
Okay, thank you.
So the question is, are we planning to hire residents to do this project for construction?
I would, I would say that that would be a decision of the city council. If the council wanted to add special provisions to the contract documents before you go out to bid with a resident hiring goals and so forth, that's certainly things that many cities have done in the past that would be up to the city council.
There's questions behind you.
Alderman Hayes?
Thank you. Question, a couple of things. Is there, as part of the, the scope of the engineering, is anything being done to reroute water lines or create efficiencies in the system or wider pipes? I mean, this is coming from somebody who doesn't know anything about water engineering. But is there anything that's being done since we're already digging the pipes up to create a better system, a more efficient system, a more cost-effective system? Something along those lines.
So in year one, that's going to be local funding. So we have planned to make it efficient to disturb the streets right before they're being resurfaced. So there is an efficiency with the streets there. In terms of the water pipes, we usually give the homeowners an option. If they want to upsize at their own cost, they can do that. So it'll be, go up to two inch. If not, then, then the standard will be a one-inch service line. In terms of the water pipes themselves, we're going to, right now, we're coordinating with the streets. For years two through six, we're going to look at how can we coordinate and do maybe a water main replacement at the same time that we're replacing the water services.
Okay. That's helpful. Could I ask another question?
Yeah, I just, I had more to add if you, if you're interested.
Yes, absolutely.
So some of the older homes share services where they might split after a certain portion of the, after the connection to the water main. So we're going to replace them where every residence has one service to the main.
Okay. Okay, good to know. And forgive me if I missed this, but if we could just clarify, I think a lot of people would be concerned about what cost burden individual homeowners may have to, to shoulder for this. Are you saying, I know you showed on the diagram where the city service, where the city line kind of ends and the individual homeowner line starts. But we're, as part of this project, we're replacing all of it at no cost, aside from the upcharge to the homeowner?
Yes, yeah. So it's going to be a full replacement from the water main to the water meter and it's going to be at no cost to the resident.
Okay.
That'll be year one. Under years two through six, that's going to be funded through the federal infrastructure bill funding. And they've said that there may be some match required from the municipalities. But we can talk to the council and staff and figure out how that match is going to be generated. If it's going to be per homeowner or if it's going to be a citywide rate increase or tax.
Okay. All right. My last comment, sorry, Alderman.
You're fine.
Would just be, it probably doesn't necessarily fall in your wheelhouse, but I think that a best practice for people would be to ensure that an individual coming into their house, whether it's contractor or whomever it is, that security is paramount, right? I mean, you see all of the things in the news about people knocking on the front door and other people are coming in the back door, scams at people's front door. We have a lot of individuals in the city who will not know that this is going on until they get it in the mail or are suspect or elderly and whatever the case may be. Just making sure that we have offered every opportunity to learn and then create a secure environment for people entering residents' homes, I think would be paramount. It would go a long way toward building some goodwill.
Most definitely.
Okay.
And that's part of the notification materials we've done in the past, like a mass text to say they're going to be on your block at this time. And we also, and the public hearings or the, the community open houses before the, the project starts, we have the contractor there to say, this is the uniform they're going to be wearing.
Sure.
This is the name badge that they're going to be wearing and all that stuff is lined up in our specs too.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm really excited that we're partnering with you guys. I think you have a very professional way of dealing with this, experience, all that, that we really need in, in this program. So thank you for, for partnering with us. I, I did have a question about the survey. We know there's not lead in some parts of the city. Is everyone still going to get the survey?
No.
Okay.
Certain project area, and you can see on this map, this is the southern half that's outlined with the blue boundary. So when we met with staff, we decided there is a certain area of the city that may have lead. If you're outside of that area, you have a newer home or a newer service and you're not going to have lead.
Okay, so can you bring that down to show the top part of that or no?
It's actually.
I'm just curious, sorry.
So this is, this is the whole map here with the blue. Uh, yeah.
Okay, so there, how, how far does that, I can't see from here. How far does that blue box go? What road is that? Okay, but the, but the north one?
Oh, the north one, it's North House.
Okay, so everything from, everything west and north of there, okay. Thank you. That's what I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
I want to say that if homes were built, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. After 1982, they don't have lead, correct?
1986 was the official federal law banning lead. What we've found is that really after 1960, there wasn't a lot of lead that was being installed. So we'll have to come up with that date for Waukegan based on what we see. So I would say odds after 1960 are low, after 1986 are almost zero.
So that means that a lot of our western wards will probably not have even contact with any of this information. Most of the areas will probably be in the first, second, fourth, fifth, some seventh, some sixth.
Third.
Yeah, some, yeah, you'll have some. So it'll affect the majority of the city, but not everyone in each ward.
Correct.
And generally speaking, if you've read anything about this, Rockford started their program in 2016. Generally, they started off at about $24,000 per household. I think they have it down to about $17,000 now because they do a lot of the work themselves, correct?
So what we're seeing now, we're using a price of $10,000 including engineering.
It's come down a lot.
Now, there is inflation, there is, you know, a lot of economic factors with materials that are going to cause the price to go up a little bit now. But there's also contractors that are hungry to get this work. So I think $10,000 is a good estimate right now.
So the biggest contractor that will be employed are plumbers.
Hmm, excavators.
Plumbers and a little bit of general underground stuff.
Yep. So plumbers are, as we all know, hard to come by anyway. And this will be not just from Waukegan, but for all cities. Plumbers will be needed all over. So if you know plumbers, that's where you need to be a friend of right now. They will be the biggest contractors that will be used in this.
Absolutely. Just one point of clarification also, I know there was questions about which wards will be affected. As we look at the maps that are presented this evening, this is just years two through six, which is our current IEPA funding application. If you remember from the very beginning in Diane's presentation, we have about 20 years worth of assumed work that, that it will take to get all of them done. So most of the wards, outside of the western wards, will in fact be touched, even though it might not be shown right on tonight's exhibit.
I have one last question. Has cost benefit analysis been run to see whether it makes sense to bring some of the work in-house for the city or for the city to purchase equipment? Or show, you know, make, make some aspect of this permanent to city services rather than outsourcing the entire 20 years worth of work?
That's a good question. I know that Jesus, the city engineer, had asked questions about that earlier, but I'm not sure if there was an analysis done. So I think we would have to follow up with staff on that.
Okay, thank you.
And we will be working all year round on these things. It won't just be summer, it will go into winter months as well.
Yes, sir.
I just have a comment and a question. My comment would be that I do know some minority plumbers that are, you know, in the area. And so when you all think about local, you should have something to do with my locals as well. And then my question to you, I know the young lady she said, when you're looking at pipe, you're looking at the meter, right? That's, and that's the way you tell it, which I guess my question would be.
I was going to say, you look at the service, so the pipe from the, where it comes in to the house, to the meter.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But is it possible that, you know, that pipe off the meter could be necessarily copper? But you could have, you know, back in the day, they would want, you know, a, a, like, I mean, you all scanned it from the top.
There are some new technologies that are coming out to be able to scan it. There's also sampling that can be done, but all of that is bleeding edge type stuff. So what our standard of care is right now is we'll go inside and look inside. And then if it's copper on the inside, we'll do an exploratory excavation close to the valve in the yard. And if that is copper as well, then we'll move on. So we, we will check two spots. And then in the future, we can probably come back and use those good scanning technologies. But I think it would be cost prohibitive to do that right now.
And to answer your question about the MBE component, the IEPA loan funding requires all general contractors that would be bidding on the project to advertise, if they're going to be subbing out any portion of the project, to advertise for DBE, MBE, WBE, disadvantaged businesses. So that, that's already a standard provision through the IEPA. Were there more questions on this side?
No, we're in good hands. We've got an align eye on it.
ILL?
I and I.
I have a question, not so much a question, but more so a comment. Because I haven't been seeing a lot of this advertising. So now I think you guys are being very sensible about the children. And so to you guys, also to the council, I think it's very important for the advertising to make sure that the community understands how important it is and to be expected these surveys end today. You understand what I'm saying? Because like you guys just explained to me, I'm not knowledgeable about this, so I really don't understand it. And so just like my son was alive then, that's like that. And we better understand that you know the urgency of the knowledge surveys when they come through. And also to the city council, I think you guys need to be looking at a lot of these community-based organizations and getting, and time with them to get this information out about these projects that's going on in the city. I say that often, thank you.
Oh, yeah, if possible, I really love when cities do communicate to the community, like the Gray saying. And maybe when you're doing a certain area, put out those street signs.
That's one of the things that we will be doing.
So that everybody, the visual, they know when I see that in the third ward, I know that it's legit, that someone's going to come to my house. I think because those would open the door, I'm telling you right now, okay? So if possible, that would be fabulous.
Social media does not work in this particular case because so many people don't have social media. So just like when we started in the first ward, we've had signs up for hydrant flushing and that kind of thing. We will do the same thing with this, is put them into the areas that will be affected. We won't necessarily do them across the city because what's the point? We're not working on that particular area. But those areas that are affected, not only will we talk about it here, we will talk about it on the website, but we will also have signs in the neighborhoods for people to see.
And that was one of the things I said about community-based organizations. You guys are talking about home residents. I think we need to understand how important it is for me locking on the doors. Those are building relationships. That's one of the ways you build relationships, to get them to understand exactly what's going on. So I implore you guys to really, really consider that.
Yes.
And I was wondering if you have more plans that you'd be doing? And those, how would you, some of the home workers, for this, because I just, you know, see that there's already a shortage of, of, and you're going to have projects as how you want state buy and it's going to make your homes even more secure. So how, is there a plan to improve building children to, give them to the function, to the function?
So the state-funded projects right now have an apprenticeship requirement. So at least 10% of the work on a state-funded job such as this will have to be performed by an apprentice. So they are thinking about that as well to try to develop incoming tradesmen. And also, I think you raise a good point. I think the more that people know about this, the more that people get involved, the better chances are that children will be interested in, in this profession and continue the tradition of doing this work. So in, in, we're, we're planning to get the survey results back by July and then we're going to go out to bid in August. Once the contractor, we'll have a low bid that comes in, we'll secure the contractor in September. As soon as we have that contractor on board, we want them to be at the public hearing. So we're going to have that public hearing sometime in September.
If you're more, if you expect there's a problem, if they, if you go to this house and you live on the west side or a hill somewhere else, what do you like?
So when we send out the survey to the whole community, if you're not in phase one of the project, we encourage you to fill out the survey and take as many pictures. There will also be a, a comment tab on that survey where you can note. There will also be a comment tab on that survey where you can note, I think I have a lead pipe, I want somebody to come out and verify it, and at that time, we'll make note of your residence and we'll put you on the list. And the other thing is, if we move through the community, there's a certain amount of money. The people that respond and we know have lead pipes, they're going to get their pipes replaced sooner than the people that we don't know have the lead pipes in the community. So that's a little bit more incentive too, to participate in the survey.
Do you have any type of light phone or text that tells you to use your light? I think ours is happening, I'm assuming it's somewhere, I think you, or is it a contact?
Not at this point, it's just a photograph right now, but that will be under consideration moving forward.
Were you just asking?
Yes. So we ask, there's really a three-step process that we use to help us out a little bit. One is we ask that you scratch the pipe, so any rust or paint that's on the pipe gets removed and we get to see the material itself. Then we ask that you put a magnet on the pipe. I'm not quite sure we're going to do that in this scenario, but we can. And then the third thing is that, just a picture. So there are ways, by the color, by the shape, by the size, and once you look at enough of these, you can get very good at identifying just by the picture. And then we will also be going out and inspecting some of the homes to verify.
What do you want me to do?
Fill out the survey, take a lot of pictures of the site where we tell you to take the picture of. You do need to scratch, yes, I apologize. Scratch it and then take pictures and upload the photos.
Is there any just walk-in? Is there walk-in area?
Yeah. There are lead service lines that are being replaced all over the state right now. So we have, all over the country, really, yeah.
It's a new federal mandate.
Twenty-four municipalities.
Thank you so much. If any of you have questions specifically that you want to ask, they'll be in the back for a few minutes out in the hallway. But I thank you very much for coming, and I just wanted to make the residents aware of this is coming up. We are in the process, like I said, we're not doing this tomorrow, but as we move forward, I want you to know exactly what's happening and how we're going about this, because this is a big thing, and like I said, every municipality is doing this. We're honored to be working with you, and like I said, they've done a really good job so far of figuring out exactly the estimate, because the way that we had to record this was this year, by April of, this year, we had to have an estimate of how many homes had lead. By April of '24 is when we actually submit all the actual addresses that will have lead. So like I said, this is a 20-year project, this isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow, and as it comes to your neighborhood, I want you to be aware and why we're doing this and what do we need from you. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for your time this evening. We are also honored to be assisting.
Thank you. Okay, with that, Madam Clerk, can we go to audience time?
Certainly, thank you. I'm going to call the first four people up, go ahead and go to the east side of the room, and you will have three minutes each. I have Mr. Rayon Edwards, Bertha Chavez, Clyde McLemore, and Kathy Charity. Mr. Rayon Edwards, Bertha Chavez, Clyde McLemore, and Kathy Charity.
David.
We're going to move that, Mr. Rayon, so it's not in your way. Start whenever you like.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. First tonight, I wanted to invite all of the city council to our second annual Book Bag Giveaway, July 30th. It'll be from 12 to 5:00 p.m. at Bowen Park in the Jack Benny Center. I'm encouraging every alderman on here, as well as the city itself, to sponsor this event. Our goal is to reach 1,000 kids in the tri-state area, and we're trying to make sure that every kid have what they need for the duration of the school year. This is important to me because I think it's going to take a lot of stress up off of the parents. The second thing I wanted to talk about was June 18th, Juneteenth, the holiday. I don't know how many people on the city council and/or if the city actually supported Mr. Errol Reed through this process or the events that's going on, but I have to make sure that this is put on record. I am disgusted. I don't know if anybody had paid attention to the process, if we're thinking about the kids and the seniors in this community. And so one thing that I was taught growing up, when I was a kid, that when you are part of something and you know this is wrong and you says nothing or do anything about it, you're just as complicit as they are. We're charging $20 to go into a church, the house of the Lord. We give this man a free parking lot in the city of Waukegan, and we're charging $30 for a meal, and that's including for a kid. It was disgusting. This was the first year that we celebrated abolishing slavery. This was a holiday, y'all, and when we celebrating, we got to start doing things for this community for free and stop always trying to profit off the back of our people, okay? And the last thing I want to talk about, I think on the city council, you guys are going to address a special event curfew for the scoop of the loop. I love the idea, but I'm also disgusted at the idea, and I'm going to tell you why. You cannot keep changing the laws and policies when it sits and it's convenient for you guys. When laws are put into place, we all have to follow them, okay? And so I understand the method behind it, but it's the perception, how people think, we already think that the law only applies for us and not you guys. So when we do things like this, I think we need to start asking the people of this city how they feel before we make these policies, y'all. We elected y'all, which means we need to be included in this process. And the last thing before I leave, there's an election going on, and it is getting very, very nasty and disgusting. And our kids are watching this, and they are watching our dogs do this. It's ridiculous, y'all, and it's getting very personal, and it's getting dangerous. And I implore all of you guys, whether you're running or not, if you know who's running, I implore all of you guys to stand up and speak up. We asking them to put the guns down out in the streets, and we asking them to stop the violence and the fighting. They're not going to stop if they're watching.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, thank you. Bertha Chavez.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Bertha Chavez, and my resident is located at 1411 Gold Row, and I'm here to be here and I wanted to make this problem.
Can you speak up a little bit?
So I wanted to make this problem public because the problem that I have, it concerns the tenants, like me. And I've been through a very despite the fact that the city of Waukegan has a complaint department, okay? And codes for apartment owners, they're not respected. And the help that they give us, it's not present in this kind of situation that I'm living right now. And I had the same problem as before, okay? And I talked to Mayor Cunningham, myself, and I showed him pictures, and needles in the parking lot, which wasn't safe for the kids playing. And now, in the place that I'm living right now, I got the same situation. I did complain, okay? I formally complained to Mr. Salas and haven't done anything. I haven't seen any, no work, okay? Code Enforcement Guide, the Works for the City, into my place at all. And I'm paying rent. Now, I'm in the situation that I got a letter, a 30-days termination list, just because I want to fight for my rights. And I got pictures and everything, what I need to show them, that the place that I'm living right now is not safe. I commented to Mrs. Salas, okay? I approached to him, there is suspicious activity in the area where I'm living right now. And only for one day, I saw this police car, okay? A regular car, just for one day. From then until now, nothing is watching. Nobody is watching that neighborhood. And as a tenant, I think that we got rights, okay? And we got to defend ourselves. I wouldn't do nothing if I would have been myself, but this is my family playing this role right now. I got three kids. And I don't know why nobody does anything. Or you just guys behind the monies of the owner's property, because they're just paying more taxes than us? I submitted complaint, I showed them pictures. It's not the first time that this happens. I got texts, messages, the complaints, but they were submitted two years ago. Nothing happened. Nothing. I showed them pictures of a drug dealer selling drugs, coming from Wisconsin, to Mayor Cunningham. He didn't do anything.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez, thank you. Clyde McLemore.
The United States ended slavery in December 6, 1863, after the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution was rectified. It wasn't until the Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas on June 19, 1866, that the state residents finally learned that the slavery had been abolished. Emancipation Proclamation wasn't known there in Texas more than two years after it was initially issued. The holiday was originally celebrated with prayer meetings by singing spirituals and wearing new clothes to represent the newfound freedom. Now council members, you wonder why I bring this history to you. Today is June 20th, Monday. Why the hell are we in this city council meeting? Today in 2022, a white mayor could not honor the black employees and celebrate the freedom that has been, that she really don't honor the Emancipation Proclamation. In your minutes that you're going to prove, from the last city council meeting, it reads, "With the exception of Juneteenth, which shall be deemed as a legal holiday only if Juneteenth falls on a weekday, Monday through Friday. When other other legal holidays listed falls on a Sunday, the following business day is considered a legal holiday." Be damned. Well, Christmas fall on Sunday. Are you going, December 25th falls on Sunday. Mayor, are you and your white counterparts going to be here December 26th, that Monday? Rather than honestly honoring federal holiday in Black Americas, you listen to your white public relations expert who tells you that to go to a $80-per-plate politicianal breakfast? How many Waukegan families do you think can afford that? If you really respect blacks, you would have had the city shut down and allow all black, white, and brown spend time with each other. Their families can learn more about the importance of Juneteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Ms. Kathy Charity.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and audience. When I come to these meetings, I understand frustrated people are addressing their issues and concerns, like myself. But to come spitting venom with disrespect toward one another is unbelievable. Waukegan has had at least 53, maybe 54 mayors, beginning in 1849. All of these mayors were Caucasian, except for the last mayor. But we know there are a lot of political ties. I'm sure a lot went on back then that led the city of Waukegan to this now 54th mayor. That's why we vote. Instead of belittling one another, no one's perfect. With crime going up, high gas, high food, baby formula shortages, feminine products going up, open borders, and Pride Month conflicting with June 10th, and the beat goes on. It is so much more going on in this world than most people can even imagine. No one know how much we vent, no matter how much we, no matter how much we vent, Waukegan is still controlled by the big house. We are in a spiritual and silent war, and it's bigger than the city of Waukegan. The website DuckDuckGo will help you find many answers to many questions, not Google. It really bothers me when people close a blind eye and a deaf ear to the truth. Being ignorant on what's going on in this country is just a pure sign of innocence because you don't know. Did anyone know that every Christmas, the capital of Springfield, Illinois worships the Baphomet? It's a satanic symbol with horns. It sits in the hall of the Capitol. Yes, Illinois. A recession is coming, and it's on its way, so pray and prepare. Because all this is a plandemic. And last but not least, it would be so nice to get new streets instead of asphalt fill-ins. Sorry to say, but it feels so good to drive down the streets in North Chicago.
Thank you. The next three people will be Stacy Bullard, Margaret Carrasco, and Charles Pitts. Mr. Stacy Bullard, Margaret Carrasco, and Charles Pitts. Anytime you're ready, sir.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Alderman, so good to see you all again. I'm coming today as the president of the Minority Contract Association, actually it's called AMCLC, Association of Minority Contractors, for Lake County. I've been doing this since 2008 on my own, you know, just pretty much, we mentor minority contractors, we get them in the trade, we educate them, we get to help them get certified. So we've been doing this for a long time. And one of the things that we've been blessed this year is now we're opening up our first location in Waukegan. And we're going to have, and we're going to have a celebration. It is going to be on the 27th of July, and I want to invite everybody there, and I want you all to come out there so that we can, we're now 501(c)(3), and we had 77 people that we mentored before, but we're trying to really get this thing going the right way. So on the 27th, we're going to have some grilled hot dogs, some grilled hamburgers. So y'all come on and show out and support minority contractors. And just a little bit of story on myself real quick, is that when I started, I started alone, and I actually teamed up with the Black Chamber, and I was working with Pastor Gass, and I used to use my own general contracting business to help minorities with opportunities. So I'll get a job, and I'll put them on my jobs so that they can grow and learn. And this very day, I still do that. So, you know, so one of the things I want to do is that, in the voice of Jerry Maguire, help me help you. So I'm asking everybody to come out and support, and I'm going to have, I'm going to come back the next meeting, and I'm going to have the flyers and everything ready. Last year, we actually, we did the campaign for the mayor's race, because I want to make sure we all get educated. This year, we did the aldermen, we did the sheriffs and several other candidates. But again, I just came to invite you guys. I met with every alderman except for Mr. Hayes, Ms. Lynn, and Mr. Felix, and I got to get to know y'all better, especially my friend, Ms. Lynn. So I thank, thanks so much. That's all, I want to stop before Janet tell me that's enough. I'm good, Janet.
Okay.
I'm good.
Where is the celebration?
It's going to be in Waukegan.
Location?
Yeah, I'm going to get every one of you all, but it's going to be 700, it's going to be 700 Lewis, and it's going to be from 12 to 2:00 p.m. You know, we're going to.
And that is a Wednesday afternoon.
It's on a Wednesday. Yeah, it's the North Shore Trust and Savings Bank. We have the whole second floor. I'll get more information, like I said, and I'll make sure that everyone gets. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Margaret Carrasco.
On June 16th, I received a letter from the Illinois Liquor Control Commission in response to my FOIA request. in response to my FOIA request, which included various interesting items. I just mentioned two of them in particular. For example, requested a copy of all complaints, incidents, violations, appeals, et cetera, for the years 2017 to 2022. The response from the state was that there was 200 incidents. Well, that's pretty much a lot. Then another request was a list of each and every liquor license issued by the state of Illinois. What's interesting is that I took that list. Let's pretend that that list is this high from the Illinois Liquor Commission. Then I compare that to the list of businesses that are serving liquor in the city of Waukegan. And it's this height. Janet, how could that be? So then, I wanted to share what, it's not the first time ever for this to happen. There's other places where this has happened, and I'll share what they did. And I recommend legal counsel that we look into that and do the same. One in particular entity, I won't say the business name here in Waukegan, okay? Chug-a-lug liquor all the time. I checked on it today. They're not even registered with the state, not even that. So in California, in the Bloomberg Law, White Collar and Criminal Law, they did an article about in this particular instance in which they calculated the loss of sales tax to the city and to the state, where it was a scheme, a massive fraud scheme of alcohol licenses, and they calculated to be $75 million. Now, I don't know how much the total is here in Waukegan, but I'm sure we can find out. And I think we need to go back and do something about, and I'm talking about this occurred during the previous administration under Sam Cunningham and Janet Kilkelly, who are in charge of liquor licenses, sales tax that's received. That's wrong, and it needs to stop. And
Thank you, Mrs. Carrasco.
You're welcome.
Mr. Charles Pitts.
I guess I have a couple of questions. I believe y'all sent a request to the legal counsel regarding finding laws or the ability to propose legislation regarding speeding and reckless vehicles. I'm wondering if y'all got anything back from it, the speeding cars? I saw a video, and the guy was just doing burnout. He was doing burnouts in the parking lot. And there was, it was crowded. Other thing I want to ask about is, I'm wondering about, do y'all have like a 10-year plan regarding downtown Waukegan? Or a 10-year plan regarding the businesses and the economic opportunities and things like that for Waukegan? I'm used to government talking about a 10-year plan about where you're going, what you're gonna do, how are you gonna help small businesses? I guess I'll have to do a FOIA for it. What the lady is talking about over here is, she's talking about renters protections. I don't think you have a rent board or some organization to make sure that people buy houses and let them become blighted and then just try to collect premium rates. We need, y'all need to definitely need to consider mechanisms to make sure that people aren't exploited with substandard illegal and toxic housing. We don't know if this lady has lead paint. She spoke about a leaking roof. So that stuff building code should be looking at. And we need to make sure that her request isn't swept under the rug. With the farmers market, I believe that part of it was just a miscommunication, and I feel like y'all probably need and needed some type of mediator or interpretator with that. I just feel that, I spoke about micro businesses maybe about six years ago. My voice was ignored, and now y'all lost the farmers market. So y'all lost a year on the farmers market. I would recommend y'all do a farmers market one day and a flea market the other day. And Waukegan has like five vacant big lots y'all could have it in, so it doesn't have to be stuck on Clayton Street. Maybe y'all can hire someone to promote it, you know, get the word out. Also, I'm getting the understanding that there's activities on Clayton Street.
Thank you, Mr. Pitts. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I have a first and a second for the consent agenda?
I'll make the first.
Second.
So Alderman Turner and Alderman Florian. Any questions to any of the motions? Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, May 16th, 2022. Item B, a motion to approve vendor payments dated June 20th, 2022 in a total amount of $1,302,961.19. Item C, motion to approve regular payroll dated June 17th, 2022 in a total amount of $1,728,563.03. Item D, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll final payout dated June 3rd, 2022 in a total amount of $144.81. Item E, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, paid holiday buyback and comp time cash out elected officials and civil service stipends, police uniform allowance and stipends dated June 17th, 2022 in a total amount of $133,843.51. There being no questions to the motion, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Just one clarification real quick on minutes. Minutes are just what was said. That's what was said and voted on. They can't be changed. Unless it was an error in what somebody said or was voted on. Otherwise, disagree with what was voted on, that's different. But the minutes are just what was said and what was voted on. That's all that is. If there's, unless it was an error in what somebody said or voted on. We will rectify. Hold on, Clyde. Go ahead. All right, that was it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no reports and communications or old business, new business?
Can we do omnibus on that one?
Absolutely. I'll make a motion to omnibus.
We have, do you want to pull some out?
We got raffles buttoned up. We'd have to pull that out.
C, D, and what? And F, okay. Yes, we need to pull some of those out anyway.
Also, F.
We already pulled that out.
Yeah, thank you.
So C, D, and F have been pulled out. Everything else would be eligible for omnibus.
Mayor, if I could, I'm open to thoughts on this, but E, I think we've heard a little bit of pushback on the curfew. So if nothing else, maybe giving the chief an opportunity to talk about the purpose of the curfew and yeah, pulling it out just to make sure, because we heard, I think it was Mr. Edwards expressed some concern about
So C, D, E, and F is the four that we will pull out? Is everybody agreeable to that?
Or just have chief come up now? Want to have chief come up now? Is that all right?
We'll pull that, we'll pull it out.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so can I have the, who made the motion for the omnibus?
I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Okay. Okay, item A, motion to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Aircon Refrigeration and Heating for the amount of $2,290,768 for HVAC upgrades for City Hall and Public Works. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item B, motion to adopt a resolution waiving the bidding process pursuant to the bona fide emergency exception and authorizing the city to engage Campanella and Sons to perform sanitary sewer replacement on Oak Street in the amount of $107,868. This matter was presented in the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item G, a motion to approve a recommendation of the proposed insurance program and authorize the Director of Risk Management to execute the policy agreements providing workman's compensation, auto liability, public officials' employment practices, law enforcement liability, underground storage tanks pollution, crime cyber liability, and property coverage for the 2223 year for a total premium not to exceed $1,964.30. I'm sorry, $1,964.38. This matter was presented to the Government Oversight and Operations Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item H, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a lease agreement with Flock Group Incorporated for an automotive license plate reader system in the amount of $63,500 to cover the initial installation and usage for the 2223 year. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item I, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve payment to Land O'Marine Services Contractors Incorporated for an emergency water main repairs in the amount of $60,000 pursuant to the bona fide operating emergency exception, Section 2458-i-2. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item J, a motion to authorize the proper city officials to release payment of $202,768 to the Yuman Creek Remediation Group Trust for the city of Waukegan share of the 2022 cash call required for ongoing engineering and maintenance of the closed Yuman Creek landfill. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. Motion to authorize, or item L, motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase one fire engine from Seagrave Fire Apparatus LLC in the total amount of $777,743 pursuant to the sole exception, Section 2458-i-1. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. I want to make a quick comment about that, and Chief Pizer, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. Isn't the turnaround that 565 days or something? Yeah, so even though we're purchasing now, that's how long it's gonna take to get that.
Wow.
Item. Did I skip K, everyone?
I believe you did.
Okay, let's go back and do K. Motion to authorize the proper city officials to make payment to Campanella and Sons for emergency water main repairs in the amount of $126,000 pursuant to the bona fide operating emergency exception, Section 2458-i-2. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item M, motion to authorize the proper city officials to purchase one command vehicle from John Jones Automotive Group in the total amount of $52,666 pursuant to the sole source exception, Section 2458-i-1. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. Item N, motion to authorize the proper city officials to enter into a three-year contract with the OSG for water and sewer bill printing, mailing, and e-bill services for an estimated monthly cost of $2,428.50. This matter was presented before the Finance and Purchasing Committee on June 20th, 2022. For those of you who don't know, this is a new firm for your water bills. Many of you had complained about the other firms, so we now have gone with a new one. Item O, motion to approve intergovernment agreement with the city of North Chicago and Lake County for the implementation of home investment partnerships program for the American Rescue Plan Funds. Item P, a motion to adopt an ordinance amending 14-317 of the City Code Regarding Fidelity Bonds for Raffle Managers. So you won't be hearing about raffles anymore.
Thank you.
Item Q, motion to adopt a resolution establishing a process to designate and appoint a temporary presiding officer of the city council in the absence of the mayor. This matter was presented to the Government Oversight and Operations Committee on June 20th, 2022. Why I have put that in is there was really nothing that we had in our ordinances, and there were always different things that I was hearing. It was either the most senior alderman would run the meeting if the mayor wasn't present, or it was the most senior person of the party affiliation that the mayor had. So since I ran as an independent, I'm not, there's not a party there. So I wanted a clear cut of how we were going to do this so that there was no questions. So that's why we're establishing that resolution. Any questions to those motions? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
So the next items.
Yes, C and D.
You can, yeah, if you wanted to take those, the C, D, E, and F, were those the ones? Right, I understand. So the C, D, and F deal with alcoholic beverages. And so if you wanted to take, or if you wanted to deal with the curfew one first, and then we can have the standard recuse all.
Okay. Item C, a motion to approve an ordinance creating a class
Okay, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that one, then Alderman Kirkwood is going to recuse himself, as is his policy with all matters dealing with alcohol licenses related.
Okay, item C, a motion to approve an ordinance creating a class F1 liquor license for 3201 Waukegan LLC Sicko Gas Station at 3201 North Lewis Avenue. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on June 6th, 2022. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
I have a question.
I need a first and a second.
I'll make the first.
Second it.
I'm sorry, is this a reference to, I understand this operation is not even open, and they're requesting this? Is this the gas station that's not even open?
Mayor Taylor, this has been brought up before. This gas station, the building itself is closed.
Maybe they're waiting.
If you could just elaborate, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing that changed in this was the classification that they were looking for. They wanted a Class C license, I think it was, to sell like not only beer and wine, but hard liquor, which we don't allow gas stations to do. So the only thing that changed in this was the Class F1 license to beer and wine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mayor, can you clarify the first and the second, please?
The first was Alderman Turner, second was Alderman Mozio.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Nay.
Motion passed.
Item D, a motion to, well, can I have a first?
I'll make the first.
Alderman Turner a second.
Second.
Alderman Mozio. A motion to approve an ordinance creating a class
Alderman Mozio, a motion to approve an ordinance creating a Class C liquor license for GB License LLC DBA GoPuff at 2664 to 2672 West Washington Street. This matter was presented to the Community Development Committee on June 6, 2022. For those of you who don't know what GoPuff is, it is a, what we call a ghost store. I think that's the name, the technical name they call it. It is a store that has a presence, but not something that you can walk into. So they are a delivery service. So, do you want to clarify, am I missing anything in saying this?
No, the, one of the, one of the changes that kind of occurred post-pandemic is that the state of Illinois amended the Illinois Liquor Control Act to state that any business with a packaged retail good license would be allowed to deliver liquor as well. This doesn't apply to restaurants, but if you have a packaged good retail, you can deliver either by using a third-party service or by using your own employees. There are state requirements on how ID is provided for these. This particular business, all the orders, I believe, are done through like an online portal, but I would not be surprised if you see more businesses like this. It's definitely something that is popping up.
Mayor?
Yes.
Well, are we at the point where we can ask questions yet?
Yes.
Wasn't it recommended by staff that we deny this application?
Wasn't it recommended by who?
By the staff that we deny this.
No, there was, there was not a staff recommendation on this.
This is totally your decision.
I think we were told, just to back up Alderman Florian, that there was a, a no recommendation from staff. So just wanted to explore that, if that was in fact the case.
Actually, you know what? Why don't we call up our Planning and Development Department? Noel, would you like to clarify?
So in the case of this store, there is a small footprint where people can go in. That was a requirement of planning and zoning to issue the business license. So you can actually walk in and purchase things there, but it's not a standard convenience store. In terms of the delivery aspect, my personal opinion was that our liquor code didn't cover delivery, but I am not an expert on our liquor code.
And, and just to clarify, our liquor code does not explicitly allow it, but the state law, interestingly, took that, took that actually out of our hands. So if any, anyone who has a packaged retail good license has the right to do delivery, either through a third-party delivery or through their own employees.
Yes, Council, that is something that I stated to all of you, per that information. I was the one that did deliver that because we don't have anything that solidifies the delivery of alcohol here in the city. So I was the one that did state that, and that was the reason why I did. We have a representative here from GoPuff that stated that he'd be, is available to answer any questions.
I think you should defer to your legal counsel, not my personal layman's opinion on the liquor code.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Question?
Who had a question?
Over here.
Okay. So one of the big concerns, obviously, with this would be delivering alcohol to minors, potentially. And I read your whole proposal and how you have all these different ways of checking IDs and, but I'll just admit right here, I don't think they can arrest me anymore because I'm almost 60, but, I mean, I had a fake ID in high school that I used all the time, I mean. So how, how are we going to prevent?
So, so the system is set up to scan the IDs?
Sir, could you introduce yourself and tell us who you're with?
My name is James Janzen, J-A-N-S-E-N, with Webster Law Partners, representing GoPuff. The way the system is set up is it scans the IDs on the back of the cards. The information comes up what those IDs should say. So it's going to say, it's John Smith, this is his birthday, this is where the ID is from, and they double-check that information against the ID and make sure it matches the person in front of them.
Does it have to be delivered to the address on the ID?
No, it does not have to be delivered to the, to the address on the ID.
That's a problem for me. Yeah, I don't like that.
Just a follow-up question. So for every delivery, I, I don't know how the software is set up or if there is even software, but it sounds like that's the case. For every delivery, there's a corresponding scan that will identify an individual or some sort of identification, so that we'll be able to link, link the two. And if it is in fact an individual who doesn't reside there or is potentially purchasing for minors, that individual's name is linked to the purchase.
Correct. That's, that's who, that, all that data is stored, and then if needed, they can go back to that.
Okay. That's helpful, thanks.
Will you deliver to like hotel rooms, parties? I mean, you know, like?
The majority of the deliveries that are done are done to private residences. On occasion, they're done to offices who want snacks during the day, happy hour type of stuff, but those are the majority of the places that people deliver to.
Okay, you just made me think of another question. So what, and maybe this was in your material, and if it is, I apologize. What percentage of your deliveries are alcohol-related and what percentage are not alcohol-related?
So we're anticipating for this store, 18% to 22% would be alcohol-related at this location.
How many locations do you have?
Six hundred nationwide. Inside the state, I believe there are 12 that are licensed.
In the state of Illinois?
In Illinois, yeah. Most of them are in the Chicagoland area.
Can we bring our police chief up?
Hold on, I have a question.
Do you have any concerns with this business?
I, I can see how people could have concerns.
But I didn't ask that question.
That's an helpful response.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see how people can have concerns with this, with this business. You know, fake IDs and minors attempting to purchase alcohol is not something new. It's been going on, and I'm not sure this process makes it easier for them. Maybe it is more difficult with their scanning every ID when most of our businesses do not scan IDs. So maybe that is a safeguard. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure. It's, minors having the ability to get alcohol is obviously a concern.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I have a question. What, just like bars have a legal responsibility for drunk drivers, what is your position when you're delivering liquor?
Can you repeat that question? My apologies.
Just like bars have the legal responsibility for drunk drivers, what is your responsibility that you're going to take when you're delivering alcohol?
So the process for delivering is, they, there are certain scenarios where they will not deliver alcohol. So if a driver comes up to a residence and the person is intoxicated, and these are all BACIT trained, which means they're receiving alcohol awareness training, if someone is intoxicated, they will not deliver that to that person. There are systems in place with the GoPuff system whereby their money will not be affected. They will still get the rate they would have gotten otherwise for that delivery, and they will take the product back to the store. They will also not deliver to anyone whose ID is in any way appears fraudulent, comes back as, you know, not matching with, with what was provided on the internal system. And being a license holder, they are in a different position than some of the other third parties, third-party drivers who are not license holders. So GoPuff, all of their drivers are under that license. Someone that uses a third-party delivery system, those drivers aren't necessarily connected to that license. Does that make sense?
Not really, but, okay. Your system, that was, you're part of your system, what you just elaborated on? So in layman terms, what is the system?
I apologize, I'm a little confused at what you're asking.
What is your system? What is your system?
You do what?
Do what?
All they do is check the licenses, the same as any bar would do. You know, I mean, that's, that's their system of just checking licenses the same way.
Your Honor?
Okay, keep it as simple.
It might be useful for you to, to actually walk through, I know you provided a PowerPoint presentation, but this is a new business model, which a lot of people aren't very familiar with. It might be useful to actually describe, like, I just went on your website. If I were to buy alcohol, can you walk through what I would be required to do?
Yeah. So you go onto website, a lot of people use the app, and you want to purchase alcohol. You'll choose what you want to purchase. It'll give you a warning right then and there saying, hey, you're purchasing something that requires you to be 21. When we go to checkout, it's going to give you the same notification. Hey, you're checking out your products that require you to be 21, we're going to be checking IDs, that kind of prompt. When the delivery driver brings it to the home, they're going to check your ID, they're going to scan it, they're going to use the, the system to make sure everything matches up, and then before they can hand you over the order, they have to get confirmation from their system that everything checks out.
When you say scan it, what do they use? Do they use an actual like magnet, magnet, magnetometic, like magnetic reader, or do they use like a?
They use the, like, the smartphone. The, the, the system is set up to take a picture of the ID and it scans that from there.
Is that picture held? It's stored?
Your Honor.
Sorry, Alderman Mozio?
I, I understand the trepidation I have a little bit myself, but as I'm thinking about this, you know, they have, they have somebody's ID tied to the purchase. Something happens, that person that purchased the alcohol was on the hook. No different than if you go to the parking lot, teenager comes up to you and says, hey, man, go buy me a six-pack. You go in there, buy the six-pack, he crashes his car, they come back, hey, you bought this kid alcohol. No different than when parents have parties, something happens, the parents are on the hook. It's, to me, it sounds like it's got, it's got the same thing. They have, they have a record of who bought the alcohol, and if that alcohol somehow gets in the wrong hands, which inevitably sometimes it will, come on, people, we, we know, it's, you know, minors have been getting, getting boos for, since they invented a damn thing. So I get it, but he said 18% to 22%, and that's not, if it would have been 80%, I'd have been a little bit, whoa, 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 whoa. But I mean, I, I get it, but I was just trying to give some other scenarios. It sounds like they have a, if, if somebody buys alcohol and something happens, there's probably a better record of that.
Yes.
Then somebody, then some kid that got a beard and is in eighth grade and goes and buys a six-pack at the liquor store and he doesn't card him. It just sounds like it. That's just me, but, I don't know.
Just one last, I just have one last question. First, I would just say, Alderman Mozio, I agree with you. It sounds like there's actually better safeguards in place because you can tie it directly to somebody. I'm not trying to hold the process up, but I just have one more question for you. When you scan the ID, is it, so the first time the driver sees the license, is that at the, at the residence or wherever it's being delivered? There isn't any sort of scanning mechanism beforehand or any information that's put in, like a driver's license number or anything like that?
Nothing like that beforehand, no.
Okay. And so they scan the ID. Now, what is the ID tied to? Is it checking a state database?
Yeah, so it'll check the different state databases. If it's a passport, it'll check that information, and it'll come up with the standard, this is what should be on that ID.
Okay.
So someone can't just take the back of someone's card and put their picture on it and see what comes up.
Okay, so it's tied to some sort of government organized database. Now, is there any sort of self-policing protocol? Say, for example, that the, the identification doesn't match. Do you, you just rescind the order, you take your delivery fee, you take the alcohol back to wherever?
Yep.
The physical address. But is there any sort of reporting to the police or any sort of, do you log that information as having come up incorrect? Do you, is there anything in place to make it so that that individual doesn't try to buy again?
I don't have that information on me. I can definitely get it for you, but I don't have that information on me right now.
All right, well, your explanation has been very helpful, so thank you. Anyway.
Alderman Turner?
So you've got 12 stores in the state of Illinois. How many violations of liquor laws have you had?
Zero.
Okay, thank you. So I'm 65 years old, and I can walk into your store and buy a beer, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and I gotta show an ID.
Correct.
Or I can sit at home and I can say, bring me a beer, and I have to show you an ID.
Correct.
So it's the difference, okay? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One, one last question for myself. So, you know, we have a lot of different IDs that people come up with, a lot of different states, sometimes different countries. Do you have like certain IDs that you won't take or, and the other, the second part of the question is, once you become a customer and you're in the database, do you have to continually provide the license, or is it already in your system?
So I'll speak to the, the second first, just because it's quicker. You would need to provide it every single time. So if you don't have your ID on you, if you forgot it, you won't be able to make that delivery for that individual, even if they'd done it 10, 100 times before. You have to have your ID every single time, it has to be valid. For the second, I know 50 US states, those are all covered. I'm not sure, I don't believe every country in the world is covered. They don't have that kind of, there's no database that covers all of that. I don't have the information on exactly what other things might be covered. It's by possible Canadian licenses may be covered, but I'm not sure about other types of licenses or IDs outside of that.
Okay. So if you didn't have a way to confirm that that was a valid ID, you just wouldn't serve them then?
Correct, yeah. It would be the same as someone having an expired ID or fraudulent.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions to this motion? Okay, can I go back and ask, who was the first and second?
Turner, Turner was the first, Mozio was the second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
No.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Nay.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
No.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item F.
E.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna do the liquor one first, since Alderman Kirkwood is out.
Thank you.
Item F, a motion to adopt an ordinance, well, I need a, a first and a second, I'm sorry. A first? Or item F, can I have a first?
I have a question, yes.
Let's get the motion first, item F. Aye, I mean, I'm so moved, I'll move it.
Okay. Alderman Mozio, a second.
I second that.
Alderman Turner, a motion to adopt an ordinance suspending subsections 3-30A and D of the City's Code of Ordinances Regarding Alcoholic Beverages and Enacting Further Regulations for SCOOP-Waukegan July 8th and 9th, 2022. Any questions to the motion?
I have a question.
Alderman Bolton.
Could you clarify the regulations, just to reiterate for our constituents?
Chief, do you want to talk about that one?
So this ordinance is for SCOOP on the 8th and 9th. It is allowing participants, people that are visiting, people that are visiting our liquor establishments, it's going to allow them to have the ability to have open alcohol in the zone that we designate for those couple of days. That's, that's what this is doing.
They have to have wristbands.
They have to have wristbands. We, the police department will be passing out wristbands to the liquor establishments downtown, and we have asked them, and we have done this in the past, and they have been very cooperative in doing so. We ask them to give a wristband to anyone that buys alcohol from, so we know that that alcohol was purchased from an establishment downtown, and people aren't carrying liquor into the festival zone. We want to prevent alcohol being brought into the zone.
A question. You had indicated zoned, which area will be zoned?
Just the downtown.
Yeah, the downtown area, I believe it is MLK to the west, Sheridan to the east, Clayton... Clayton 50 feet north of Clayton, and I believe Lake Street 50 feet south of Lake Street. That is the zone that we are allowing alcohol, open alcohol to be carried around.
And like I said, that's only with wristbands. Any other questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsome.
No.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As soon as Alderman Kirkwood is seated, we will go through item E. Can I have a motion for item E?
Make the motion.
Second it.
Okay, Alderman Turner and Alderman Mosio. Zach, I only have two Aldermen tonight, it's like you're just... Item E, motion to adopt an ordinance enacting a special event curfew for persons under 18 for SCOOP-Waukegan, July 8th and 9th, 2022, pursuant to section 15-16G of the city's Code of Ordinances. Good place, Chief, you're right here.
If I could, real quick, Mayor, I just asked it to be pulled out. Mr. Edwards, you had expressed some concern during audience time about the curfew being enacted, and I understand your concern, because we're, it looks like we're loosening alcohol restrictions and tightening the curfew restriction. And I just thought this was an opportunity to kind of hear from the chief and understand why we were doing it. I'm not necessarily questioning it per se, I just would appreciate a broader explanation.
Understood. So again, this is not new. We have done this in the past with SCOOP event. We are, again, establishing a zone, and we are asking for a little tighter restrictions on juveniles during this event. However, the, and the exact parameters are younger than 14 years old, must be accompanied by a guardian anytime after 8:00 PM. 15 and 16-year-olds have to be accompanied by a parent or guardian 9:00 PM and later. And then 16 and 17-year-olds need to be accompanied by a parent or guardian after 10:00 PM. So we have asked for the timeframe to come down. I think it has worked well in the past, I also think it makes sense. This is event, it is a family event, however, there is alcohol in cars, and the later the event goes, the more we want to make sure that these juveniles are accompanied by their parents or their guardian. We are not, you know, there will be signage posted on both event days. We have signs made that we've used in years past indicating about the curfew. It'll also have the alcohol information as well. And we're not trying to run 13-year-olds and 14-year-olds and 15-year-olds out of the event. We are just asking that they are accompanied by a parent or guardian, because the later the event gets, the better off it is that these juveniles are with their parents versus having freedom to be moving about the festival.
I appreciate that explanation. Oh, you have something else to add?
You know, and I should add here. Listen, the police department has no intention of trying to round up hundreds and hundreds of juveniles and issue curfew citations here. It is a tool that gives the police department, a tool to use should we find some juveniles that are in a group and they won't leave, and they can, you know, we ask them to leave and they continue to come back. So, it is a tool for us. We're not looking to arrest juveniles and cite a bunch of juveniles at this event. We'd like to hopefully issue no citations for juvenile.
Right. So two things, number one, I like the explanation, and I like that you're bringing the parental responsibility into the equation, because we've talked about that up here before. We can't be responsible for raising kids ourselves. We can't have the school district, the parents have to be involved. And so by saying, you know, if you're with your parent, fine, you're golden. So I like that. And second of all, maybe, I know you've done flyers about other different things. Is there a way we can get some flyers or something so that people understand what the definition of this is? Or, I know we have a hard time getting the word out to people, but...
Yeah, fair, you know, listen, we will put it on social media. I know everyone doesn't see social media. Again, there's signage posted, and just to be clear, we will be educating people when there's an issue. Our goal is not to grab 13-year-olds and, are your parents down here? Where are they at? We'll take them to your parents. If your parents aren't here, maybe we make a phone call. Have your parents come down here, come pick your juvenile up, please. We will be in the business of educating versus citing.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no ordinances, closing items, Alderman time.
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, it's kind of, I just wondered, you know, maybe we should, I don't know if we want to do it formally, or just I would encourage, we ought to think about doing some follow-up in response to questions that are asked in audience time, because we have a lot, and this always happens, right? People come and ask questions and make statements, and we can't listen for three minutes and then they go away, and there's never any follow-up or response. When citizens, residents of the 6th Ward come up, if I recognize them or they give their address, I try to make a point to follow up with them and answer as best I can, but maybe I'll just encourage my colleagues, the Aldermen, and the mayor's office to do some follow-up. Some of these questions are, you know, really simple, they don't take a lot of effort to answer. Audience time is not the time for back and forth, it's not conversation time. And we, I think we all understand that. But I would just encourage some follow-up and being responsive to our residents. And that kind of leads me into the issue or the statements that were made by Mrs. Carrasco regarding the liquor licenses, and apparent, according to her, there's a disparity in the number of state licenses issued in the city of Waukegan. State of Illinois issues a liquor license, and then we all issue a license, so there should be a match, right, or less than. But certainly not, we should not be, there should not be more city-issued licenses than there are state-issued licenses. And I'd like to have some follow-up on that, definitive, and find out, I mean, we need to do audit whatever it takes to find out. We might start with the information that Mrs. Carrasco has at hand.
We've already started that process.
Great. Do you know when you expect to have it?
I mean, I don't know what she's talking about, but we have already started matching things up and that kind of thing, and making sure that when they come in for renewals, that the applications are completely filled out and all the information is current.
I apologize, Mayor, we can't hear you.
Oh, I said, he was asking about Ms. Carrasco's information. I don't know what she's talking about, but I can tell you, when they just renewed their liquor licenses, we made sure that all the information was updated and that the applications were completely filled out, so that any changes that they had, anything like that, has all been, you know, matched up. So, I'm not sure, we will look into that, but I'm not sure where her numbers are coming from.
I agree. Those have always been the priority, to have everything be current in the last five years.
I don't know what number she's talking about.
Well, I question her methodology.
And that's what I'm suggesting, maybe to start by having a conversation with Margaret or Mrs. Carrasco, and ask her, what information can she provide, what has she got, right? So we can do a comparison. It wouldn't hurt. All right. Summertime and the noise, noisy parties and such are becoming, you know, summertime. I had one the other night directly across the alley from me, and man, it was lovely. They had a great time, they had a band, and they were dancing, they had a good time. But it went on very late. Now, the noise ordinance actually is in effect 24 hours, and it stipulates, the stipulation is that you shouldn't be able to hear the noise as amplified for more than 50 feet, Chief? 50 feet, right? So that's 24 hours a day. What changes is the fine for violating that ordinance depending on the time of day or night. So, whenever you have, you can be like 2 o'clock in the afternoon, if your neighbor is blowing it out, you know, you can call the police, call the non-emergency number. You know, I tend to be a little more lenient during the day, but when it gets to be, you know, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, I have a problem, and many of my neighbors do, so either I contact the police, or, you know, sometimes on a rare occasion, I'll make contact myself. But I'm less inclined to do that, and I don't encourage you individuals to go and make contact with your neighbor who's having these loud parties, because most often alcohol is involved, and you can easily just, what you might think is an innocent confrontation or engagement turns into a confrontation. So I think at best, in those cases where you have noise violations, to contact the police via the non-emergency number. An officer will respond, you know, and they're not going to drop everything else that you're involved in or responding to and come over, but they will respond, so that would be my recommendation. And further, I would recommend and suggest and ask those who are hosting parties and such to be mindful of your neighbors and mindful of the time and your noise levels. I think I talked about this last meeting, but again, Mr. Sallis, in particular, to your attention, I've had a number of calls from residents, and I know we're being more consistent, and I applaud this, and I've spoken to that before, and consistent in our enforcement of notices of violation of building codes and so forth and so on, but we've got to find a better balance. I'm getting a number of calls from particularly elderly residents who are on fixed incomes. I had a lady call me, and I mean, she was, I could hear in her voice, she was in, she was scared, because she got a letter in the mail that said she had to get a hard surface or driveway, which I understand many of those driveways were grandfathered in, and then she had a notice to paint the front of her house or something, and she just, she does not have the money. She's literally trying to sell that house for as is conditioned to get out of it, because her husband died like two years ago, and she's all alone, so. We need to be more cognizant or more understanding of the plight, or might be a plight, of someone who we're issuing violations to. And I know we always look for, we're not looking for, to penalize people, that's not the idea. What we're looking to do is solve problems, find solutions. And so if we can be helpful to our residents, that would be a boon for us all. And finally, I am happy to report, I'm delighted, this just makes me giggle, because I moved to Waukegan October 1999, and 2000, I became kind of politically active. But what happened was, the reason I became politically active, I got my first property tax bill. And I was driving in the car on Grand Flor, and I was reading that property tax bill, and I looked at it, just as I was getting ready to turn onto my street, I noticed that big old number I had to pay, I was like, God, Lee, I gotta pay all this money? And I didn't see the yellow curb was not painted. And I didn't understand, and I started crying about that. Why are they not painting the yellow curb, and I gotta pay all these property taxes? So I am happy to report, ladies and gentlemen, after 22 years, thank you, Director Garland, finally got that yellow curb painted, so thank you very much. And that's all I have tonight, thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I will be fast. First of all, I want to offer a happy belated Father's Day to all the dads out there. Also, I want to thank all the Waukegan residents who participated in audience time. Your input is valuable. And condolences to all the families who lost a loved one or a family member. Special condolences to a dear friend, Jill Anderson Snarsky, who lost her father last week. And finally, it's going to be hot in the next couple of days. Please check on the welfare of your neighbors, senior neighbors in particular. Again, it's going to be terribly, terribly hot. Today it was, I believe, in the 90s, but it didn't feel that way. But, you know, you never know. But as the weather gets hotter, please check on the welfare of your neighbors. And that's all I have, thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have a couple things. The Waukegan Park District is hosting community days throughout the city, and this coming Saturday is at Country Lane Park in my ward, actually, almost in my neighborhood. It's from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It's giving residents an opportunity to beautify their local parks. Various participation opportunities are mulching, painting, trash cleanup, and more. So hopefully, there'll be some people from throughout the 8th Ward, particularly Country Lane subdivision, that will want to participate in this again from 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday. I am going to be there for most of the time to thank everyone who participates. And I thank the Waukegan Park District for coming up with this program to get people involved. Our park district is amazing, as everyone knows, and this may just make it more amazing, so. The only other thing I want to say is I hope everyone will vote on the 28th or sooner. Early voting has started. Most of the people are gone already, but for all of you that always complain about us up here, voting is how you change this. So, get out there and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On that same note, is what Alderman Florian ended with, you heard the mayor, talked to her in the mayor's comments about opportunities to join city boards, whether it's planning and zoning, or the library board, the housing board, whatever it may be. We have a number of individuals who come who are displeased with the way the process is, or the way it's shaking out, or the issues that come before city council. A way to have a say in the items that we're hearing is to get involved earlier in the process. If you're, for example, on the planning and zoning board, you'll have a say before a number of items quite often come to city council. You can have an opportunity to ask questions, report back to individuals in your neighborhood, and just be a part of the system. So I would encourage anybody who has an interest in any of the individual organizations or boards that the mayor referenced, I'm sure it'll be posted online, but to apply and go through the process. And as I said, it's just, it's a really great way to get involved and learn more about city government. I believe that Public Works has already started, perhaps on Monday, if not this coming Monday, fire hydrant flushing, and then they will be, I think the youth conservation corps will be following up behind the hydrant flushing to paint the fire hydrants. I know a number of residents in the 9th Ward, especially in some of the homeowners' associations, have requested that their fire hydrants be repainted. So that is in process, I'll try to get an update on the timing of that. But that is something that is happening this summer. And lastly, we're working on getting a date for getting another dumpster. I know it was a big hit, we'll make sure that we have more than one dumpster this time around. Last time, the weather put a kink in things. But, and we will make sure that I get the dates out to everybody, and we'll try to do some flyers, and anything we can to help people kind of clean out the garbage. So with that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bolton.
Thank you. Please be aware that there's information, it's already been announced, citywide hydrant flushing, that has already begun in the 1st Ward. So, please pay attention, the signs are out. The further information on that says, Waukegan Water Department is conducting a community-wide hydrant flushing. During this process, customers may experience discolorization and low water pressure. Upon completing your area, please allow the tap to run for three to five minutes to clear the water lines. So I'm announcing that right now for the 1st Ward. And then also, I want to give out condolence to Pat Jones, who lost Waukegan Township, who has lost her mother. Her mother has transitioned. She was a wonderful, wonderful woman of elegance and just really precious. And then, secondly, condolence to the Colburn family, Bishop Colburn, Sr. And then, secondly, condolence to the Colburn family, Bishop Colburn Senior, as well as those that are also experiencing loss. Also wanted to commemorate Juneteenth. I was one of the tour guides for the English Manor Tour throughout the city. It was a wonderful experience to explore the history of Waukegan during Juneteenth, and that was a free event. So I just encourage you all, next year, make sure you get up on it. And then speaking in behalf of Sylvia England, who has turned her home into a museum, just please contact her, look online for that museum, which has become a Black Afro-American museum. The other thing is, it was wonderful to be at Jesus Name Apostolic Church on yesterday, rendering a proclamation to Bishop Caples, who has contributed a great deal of community service, him and his congregation. And then I also want to mention, I have come across Trinity AME Church, which is looking for applicants that, for those that have graduated from high school. Please, please, call me at 224-607-8445. That number again is 224-607-8445, and I can give you the information for that scholarship information. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Seager.
Yes.
Alderman Mozio.
Yes.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A couple of things. The disposal date is this Saturday, June 25th, as the mayor stated, from 8:30 to 11:30 at 25 South Martin Luther King. You can dispose of your paper, old medications, old electronics. Once again, that would be this Saturday from 8:30 to 11:30. Also, I want to thank YCC for cleaning the alley south of Catalpa and Butrick. They did an excellent job. Also, I'm asking all Neighborhood Watch programs to give me a call when you set up your meetings, so that I can be present at those particular meetings. Also, we will have those disposal dates, again, in September, also in late March, and then back again in June. Also, just a reminder, as we get ready to celebrate the 4th of July, that we're careful regarding those individuals who are using firecrackers. As you know, they are illegal in the city of Waukegan. Thank everyone for coming out, have a safe travel home.
Thank you, Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to announce that I'll be hosting my next ward meeting for the 5th Ward. It will take place Thursday, July 21st, 5:30 to 7:00 PM, here in the city council chambers. Refreshments will be served, and if you have any questions, you can reach me. I have a new city cellphone at 847-390-2691. That number again is 847-390-2691. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, that concludes the Alderman's time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, thank you, Alderman Kirkwood, for reminding people about fireworks. Please enjoy our firework display, but let's watch our fireworks at the lakefront and not do them in our own neighborhoods. With that, everyone have a great 4th of July. I know I will see you at a lot of the festivities. Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
I need a first and a second.
I'll first.
I was going to say, the, a motion, a second, who was the second? Alderman Rivera. All those in favor?
Aye.
Drive safe, everyone, all, drive the speed limit, everyone.